Castle County Public School Board Meeting will connect to our order. Ms. Bailey?
In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a roll call vote must be taken in which all members affirm that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings, as identified in the motion for closed session, were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Mr. Wender?
So certified.
So certified.
Mr. Whittaker?
Chairwoman.
So certified. Thank you. Just a note of information, Mr. Eric Robinson had to be out of town and is not able to be here tonight, but he had looked over all the information and is aware of business for the month. We will now have a moment of silence, followed by our Vice Chair, Ms. Whittington, leaving us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve items A, B, and C of the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Move to the second to approve the consent agenda, which is minutes prior meeting, monthly claims, and the personnel recommendations. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, it is approved.
I make a motion to approve the sick leave bank request for employee H for seven days.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we move to the second to approve employee H for seven days, sick leave bank, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
It is approved, one extension. Okay.
And I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 10, 2021 Student Disciplinary Committee Meeting, in which Mrs. Mullins, Ms. Moeller, and myself were in attendance.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Wait, ain't that what we just did? What did we just do?
At sick leave bank.
Oh, can I back up another abstain and vote for it?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the disciplinary committee meetings from May 10. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
Okay. Now move to recognitions and instructional focus. We have an employee spotlight. Dr. Stacy?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Ms. Bailey, Ms. Hill, at this time I'd like to ask Ms. Susan Moplin if she would come up on stage for the roast, I mean recommendation. Ms. Moplin is truly a feat. She is celebrating actually her 51st year of service Tasewell County Public Schools. And so what I'd like to do, I'll direct your attention to the PowerPoint, there'll be some -- she doesn't know half of what's coming, so it's all new to her. But anyway, I'd like to say a few things about Ms. Moplin. Ms. Moplin's a 1966 graduate of Bluefield High School, a 1969 graduate of Appalachian State University, a 1975 master's degree graduate from Radford College, which is now Radford University. She was hired in Tasewell County in December of 1969, yes, 1969. And from December of 1969 until June of 1974, she taught first grade at Tasewell Elementary for four years and seven months. And on March the 1st, she moved to Dudley Primary, and she has stayed at Dudley Primary since March the 1st, 1975. From March the 1st, 1975 until June of 2007, she taught first grade for 32 years and four months. And in July of 2007, Ms. Moplin was moved to the principal of Dudley, and that's where she's been for the past 14 years. Ms. Hill added a few comments here that I'll go ahead and read. Ms. Moplin started when Richard Nixon was in office and has been principal and employee for 10 presidents, and some of those presidents have served multiple terms. But I'll just say this, and as superintendent would enjoy Ms. Moplin is, she knows her school, she knows her students, she knows her faculty, and she's the boss. She's just the boss, you can ask anybody in Bluefield whether they go to Dudley or not, Ms. Moplin is the boss. And so, again, she's been a joy for me to work with over the years, and now superintendent, she is a stickler for the rules and the policy, but again, she's always looking out for the best of her kids. And so from the bottom of my heart, and I thank everyone up here, Ms. Moplin, we certainly appreciate you, and what an accomplishment, what a feat. And I will say this too, a few months, a year ago or so, I called Ms. Moplin just checking on something, and she said, Chris, I just want to let you know something. And I said, yes, ma'am. And when Ms. Moplin says that, you kind of sit up straight in your chair because you don't know what's coming. And she said, I am nowhere near ready to retire. And I said, Ms. Moplin, that's good with me, you stay as long as you want to. So, Ms. Moplin, again, we certainly appreciate you, and we just wanted to recognize you because honestly, what a feat that is.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And if y'all couldn't read that, it was "Do You Like Me?", and that was from Moses.
Oh, let me -- I've got to tell this too, we had a retirement dinner a few weeks ago, and one of the retirees, Coach David Litz, was kind of looking through the crowd, and I think he turned it into a roast. And he said, it was a joke, he said, Ms. Moplin, not only does she teach Moses in the second grade, but she retained him in the second grade as well. So that's kind of our little inside joke there. But again, Ms. Moplin, we thank you. Y'all want to get a picture with Ms. Moplin? Thank you.
[applause]
I would like to say, a lot of people ask me, because they realize how long I've taught, why are these children working? And my answer is, I like what I do, and I enjoy my job. I have my health, and I like the things that I've made a difference. When I was in classrooms, with some of my children, there was in the classroom, my daughter in first grade, there's nothing like seeing these fragile on a first grader's face, and they realize they're reading. And you stop and think that you helped that child achieve that goal, and hopefully, you played a little bit of a foundation for them, you know, for all of those schools. And then when they come back with their seniors, and they do their senior walk through, you have their pictures made, and away I talk to Bailey.
She's over there.
At Tasewell, maybe you need to remember when, remember when you made a step forward, remember when you did that, remember when, but sometimes it's the smallest thing in the remember whens that make the biggest difference with the students. Am I ready for another 50? No. Will I continue as long as I feel that I'm successful in doing what I'm supposed to do, and working with several office staff, my faculty staff, and our students and parents in Bluefield area? It's just something that I've always wanted to do, and I hope I can continue to do, and continue to make a little bit of difference in some of the lives of these children.
Thank you.
[applause]
We have a new little focus that we're going to do tonight, too, for new employees who have been approved before tonight to be hired. We had invited them to come to the school board meeting so that they could be introduced, and we can meet them, and they could meet us as a board. So if Ms. Taylor introduces you, if you would mind to come up, we would like to shake your hand and welcome you to Tasewell County Public Schools.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mullins. I did hear from some of our new hires that they were out of town for various reasons, and so there were some that reached out to me to let me know that they were sorry that they could not be here tonight. So, and again, I'm not sure exactly who was able to come tonight, but as I call your name, if you'll come on up. Lindsay Asbury, she's going to be a teacher at Tasewell High. Michaela Baldwin's on her honeymoon, I know she couldn't be here tonight, she's going to be a teacher at Richlands Middle. Farrah Boyd is going to be recommended for a teacher at Cedar Bluff Elementary. Leslie Clevenger, Tasewell Intermediate. Kayla Fields, Cedar Bluff Elementary. Cameron Gasperson, Graham High. Brianna Gillespie, Abs Valley. Kelsey Keen, Tasewell Primary. Jessica Morgan, Graham Middle. Courtney Smith, Abs Valley. Mary Stamper, Tasewell Middle. Jacob Stowers, Tasewell Primary. I'm not sure if Jacob could make it tonight. Alexis Thompson, Graham Middle. And Jane Vence will let me know she cannot make it tonight, she's going to be at Richlands High. I think that is all of the new hires that we had previously approved. Okay. And Ansley Miller is a transfer, she's been a DA for us. And Katrina Hampton also is going to be a transfer, she's been a DA for us, thank you ladies, I'm sorry. Congratulations, hon.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome to our school.
Congratulations.
Anybody else I didn't call your name?
Happy to have you.
Chairman Mullins, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that honor for our new hires, and I hope it's something we can continue.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate you. This will be Ms. Taylor's last school board meeting with us, she is retiring also. And so, Ms. Taylor, we appreciate you and all you've done, and thank you so much.
Ms. Welch.
And Ms. Welch, I guess this will be your last one, too, huh?
You ladies can always come back.
Yes, yes, you can come back. Ms. Welch and I go back a long ways. We started out teaching in elementary school together, and we did a dinosaur unit one time at Tasewell Elementary School, and there were dinosaurs all over that school. But we had fun. Yeah, we did. So I wish you the best, both of you, in retirement. And thank you to the new employees, it was nice to put a face with the name, we see your names as I come through, but it's nice to put a face with it, and we welcome you We will now go to hearing of citizens, I did not have anyone to sign up, so we'll move on to hearing of employees. This is an opportunity for employees to speak, and we want to encourage you to do so, you're always welcome to speak to us at the board meeting or individually, and so the floor's now open for employees who would like to speak. Second call. Third and final call for employees. That's the public comments at 7:15, so I guess we'll come back to that. Unfinished business, approval of proposed policy regulations on personnel, second read, Ms. Taylor.
Madam Chairman, Vice Chairman Whittington, School Board Members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, Ms. Bailey, I'm coming back to you tonight for the second read on the proposed policy update regulation, policy regulation update to GDN-R for personnel, and this pertains to classified evaluation. One thing that I realized in my position as the HR Director is that the classified evaluation tool was not standardized. And so I wanted to take the language from the teacher professional evaluation and lend that to the classified evaluation to make one standard form of evaluation for all types of classified employees, although their jobs vary greatly. We can look at the job description and have one section of the evaluation that pertains to the performance of the duties of that job, but then we can also look at universal factors that have to do with performance evaluation for classified employees. And I would also like to include that form in the policy manual so that administrators, managers, supervisors can have ready access to one document as they go through the evaluation process. And so tonight, that's a second read.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve proposed policy regulation GDN-R personnel as a second read.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Okay, not all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, it does pass second read.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Dr. Stacy, did you want me to give an update about the electronic submission?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I'd ask Ms. Taylor also, I know it's not on the agenda, but just to give a brief update for employees on the contract process.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much. So on Friday, we did roll out electronic submission of contracts, many of you have received notifications from Frontline to set up your account, that's not spam, that is a legitimate request. Many of you employees, I have been helping them to get their Frontline accounts set up. For those who already had a Frontline account set up, it has been a seamless and easy process, and we have been able to distribute and already collect many of the hundreds and hundreds of forms that go to each of the employees, work agreements, part-time, full-time, all the different types of hourly wages that we have. And so I feel really good about the process, we're in the implementation phase, and I feel next year, Mr. Brad Carr, when he comes in, I told him, I'm building the car, you can drive it. And so we've got it implemented, and I feel like it's a really good system. So I thank you to everybody for your patience as we've gone through that implementation process. Thank you.
And again, I can't stress enough the work that Ms. Taylor, Ms. Cox, Ms. Lester have really put into this. And again, like she said, this year really was building the car, and hopefully we can continue driving in years' future. But again, a lot of work went into setup, and I think once we get used to it, and again, it's new for all of us, but once we get used to it, it's really going to be a game changer for us.
And to ease employees, don't be afraid to ask for help. Ms. Whittington and I were trying to do ours this afternoon, and we had to call in for help, too.
I still haven't figured it out.
So don't hesitate to ask for help.
I would like to say that I think, how long have I been here?
Forever.
All of y'all were still working.
2008.
2008, so it's probably about 2010 I started fussing and kicking and hollering, screaming to get contracts out before July 1st, and this is probably the earliest I think we've had them out. And I, so thank you, Ms. Taylor, you've accomplished something, I can go with you now, maybe. Was that recorded?
All right, we'll move on to new business. We need to ratify school board poll votes from May 21st for insurance, May 28th personnel, June 1st personnel. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to ratify the poll votes of May 21st, 2021, May 28th, 2021, and June 1st, 2021.
Okay. And they were all three approved, five to zero. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, so ratify those poll votes. Okay, approval of proposal for replacement of two 5-10 split system heat pumps serving the student center, it is grant funded. Don't think Mr. Beavers is here, Mr. Parkhurst.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Dr. Stacy, School Board Members, Ms. Hill and Ms. Bailey. I'd like your approval for proposal for the two replacements for our split units. It is a grant funded for the price of $41,752.
Is there a second? I mean, I'm sorry, is there a motion? I've got ahead of myself.
I make a motion to approve the train contracting proposal L-21-305-3885 in the amount of $41,752 to replace two 5-10 split system heat pumps serving the student center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, that passes. And then approval of proposal to install two ductless systems for Tasewell County Career and Technical Center, masonry and auto service and technology classrooms, Mr. Parkhurst. You're still up.
To heat in there, in two classrooms at the career center for $30,913.
I make a motion to approve the train contracting proposal L-21-301-8546 in the amount of $30,913 to install two ductless systems for the Tasewell County Career and Technical Center, masonry and auto service technology classrooms.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, that passes. And approval of proposal to provide an additional HVAC system to serve the second gym at Graham High School, this will be grant funded, too. Mr. Parkhurst, you're still up.
Yeah, we want to add the second unit, while we have the crane on site, so we don't have to pay for a crane to come back. And the total on that one's going to be $400,015, $831.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the train contracting proposal L-21-305-3920 in the amount of $415,831 to install an additional HVAC system to serve the second gym at Graham High School.
Is there a second?
Through my terms, I will second.
Okay. All in, any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Thank you. That's approved. And approval of propane bid, Mr. Parkhurst.
The last one is for propane for the schools, is for $1.41 per gallon, and that's all we have on that one.
I make a motion to approve the propane bid from Feral Gas in the amount of $1.41 per gallon.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes. Thank you, you made it through your first one.
I feel a lot of place for the tie, but we did it.
No, you're doing great. Did a good job. Okay, approval to submit grant applications and agreements, Ms. Welch, Director of Elementary Education, Mr. Brown, Director of Middle School Education, and Ms. Beavers, Supervisor of Technology Career and Technical Center.
None of them are getting it.
Y'all just came out to get it?
As you know, this is just the approval to apply for the grants, the applications are due July 1st. The pre-K application, I finished May 15th, so it's in, but the others are just, we just want to apply for grants.
Okay.
Is it my turn to second?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve submission of federal and state grant applications for Title I, Part A, Title II, Part A, Title IV, Part A, Title V, Part B, Subpart II, and Title III, Part A Consortium Agreement in the Virginia Pre-School Initiative.
Okay. Is there a second?
I don't know, I've got a lot of questions.
Well, second, any more questions?
Do you have time, Ms. Welch?
Sure.
I'm not second.
I'm just glad I don't have to do it anymore.
Thank you, ladies. Are there any questions?
No.
If you'd like to come back for old times' sake, you're welcome.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, you have permission to proceed. Thank you, Ms. Welch, we will miss you. Okay, approval of Virginia Public School Authority Educational Technology Grant, Ms. Beavers.
Good evening, Miss Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, Ms. Bailey. Tonight I ask that you approve a resolution to accept the VPSA grant, which requires expenditures not to exceed $465,600, of which up to $388,000 can be reimbursed to us through a state reimbursement, creating an out-of-pocket cost to Tasewell County Public Schools of $77,600. This grant is used to purchase devices and infrastructure, excuse me, infrastructure necessary for online SOL preparation and testing, and will continue to provide funds necessary for the support of a digital learning environment. Tonight I ask that you accept and approve this grant and sign the resolution declaring your intent to reimburse our school system from the state funds associated with this program.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the VPSA reimbursement resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. And Ms. Beavers, I think you're up again for the MOU for Masonry Training.
Yes, ma'am. Tonight I present to you a proposed memorandum of understanding between the Tasewell County Career and Technical Center and Southwest Virginia Community College that would enable our center to provide adult night classes for NCer training and certification. The complete terms of the agreement are in your packets, but I'll provide you with a few of the highlights. The college proposes to use our facility, materials, and equipment, much like the agreement that we have for our adult CNA program that we started approximately three years ago. The program will have no cost to the school, but will enable us to provide a significant service to our community workforce while improving our facility. Under this proposed MOU, TCTC would receive $950 per student. A portion of this tuition would go to the masonry department for equipment and supplies, and the remainder would be used to benefit the facility in general. The college will provide for and pay the instructor, but the agreement does specify that both parties must be in agreement for the instructor. I would also like to point out that Mr. Rose and Mr. Mullins from the college and I have worked to draft this as a stock MOU that could be applied to many different situations, because we hope this is the first of many such agreements between our two organizations so that we can meet the workforce needs of our area as they change and grow. Tonight I ask that you accept and approve this MOU, and that you either sign the agreement or allow me or Dr. Stacy to sign the agreement on behalf of the school system.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for masonry training, allowing Tasewell County Public Schools to partner with Southwest Virginia Community College.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second, but I've got questions before we vote, if you don't mind.
All right, questions, go ahead.
The, Ms. Beavers, the instructor, is that going to be our instructor, or will they be bringing someone in?
It is intended to be our instructor, and that's the reason why we specified that we both have to be in agreement. They provide the instructor, they pay for the instructor, and the person would be hired through them, but it has to be someone that we agree to, because they are using our facility and our materials, and that's.
That was kind of my concern.
Yes, yes, that is specified in the agreement.
Who schedules, does the college schedule?
They do, but they do it in agreement with us, we work together, just like we do with the CNA program, to make sure that it coordinates with our schedule, so it doesn't interfere with anything that the school does.
And I know in the past, when we had classes at Tasewell High School, if we were closed for snow days, and then that automatically canceled night classes.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they went on our schedule.
Yes, ma'am, that's how it works, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, that's how it works, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, and I was glad to hear you say that might work with other things in the future.
That's our hope, we want to get our foot in the door and then keep working.
That's right, thank you. Annual School Health Services Report, Ms. Singleton.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, and Ms. Bailey. So you should have in front of you the annual, um, Health Services, uh, report. I am going to go over some highlights. So the Health Services Department consists of eighteen employees, myself, three supervising RNs, which there's one in each area, Bluefield, Tassau, and Richlands. There's twelve LPNs and two CNAs. They're each in our schools, our fourteen schools. We did start with some new staff this year, including myself, three new nurses, and two new RNs. We quickly adjusted, there was some new challenges, but, um, just like everything else in the school system, the show must go on, so. There's some state mandated screenings, um, that we are responsible for, so I'm just going to highlight some of those responsibilities, including the screenings. The state does mandate that we are responsible for vision and hearing screenings within sixty days of school starting. They did go ahead and, um, extend some of the hearing screenings, as long as those were scheduled within the sixty days. So overall, our nurses screened, um, over four thousand students for vision and hearing this year. That does include our special ed, a hundred and fifty-two students special ed. There was nine hundred and eighty-nine scoliosis screenings. We are also responsible for physical exams, including bus drivers. We offer that to the Transportation Department. Right, um, at the beginning of school, COVID shut down school in March of last year, so at the beginning of school, we did have to go ahead and get physicals in for bus drivers to be able to drive their buses. So we did, um, offer the physicals right off, right at the beginning of school. We did ninety physicals for bus drivers, and then sixty-eight again this spring. The nurses, I do have a team of nurses that help with that. They work up these physicals, um, including blood pressures, um, vital signs, the vision and hearing screenings, um, before that physical exam is complete. So the new, the, the big thing, the new thing this year was COVID testing and tracing, so that was all new to the nurses, and then of course myself. We did, um, partner with a couple local facilities for, um, COVID testing for employees. There was over two hundred employees tested through, um, those local entities. There was a hundred and fifty-seven, um, COVID positive students reported to Tassau County Public Schools that we, um, kept track of. Over nineteen hundred students quarantined due to a reported exposure. Ninety-five positive employees reported to Tassau County Public Schools. Four hundred and seventy-three employees quarantined reported. We also assisted and established in managing COVID vaccine clinics, as well as the usual flu clinics. There was two hundred and five vaccinated for flu for staff, and four hundred and forty-five vaccinated for flu for students. COVID-nineteen vaccines were new this year. We had reported over six hundred, six hundred and fifty, uh, staff vaccinated for COVID, and two hundred and fifty-six students vaccinated for COVID. We did set these clinics up in the schools, um, it was late this year, but it was twelve and up for the Pfizer vaccine. For Student Services, we provide acute and chronic care to the students in the schools. We provide educations, education, and the RNs do have to write, um, every year, the annual IHVs and EAPs for the chronically ill students. We also bill for Medicaid services, for nursing services, through the IEP system. This was new this year, so we did train on this, where we were able to electronically bill for these services. And then we also, which I'm very proud of, um, because of your support, Central Office's support, we were able to, um, train on the electronic health record system this, late this year, and we're implementing that in the fall. That'll be our first electronic health record, so everything will be digital. For Staff Services, we provide acute and chronic care to, care to staff as well. We, um, provide blood pressure monitoring, glucose monitoring, provide education, assist with vaccines, disease treatment prevention, planning, and referrals. For our community, we work closely with the Tassau County Health Department to monitor and mitigate infectious diseases. We provide education to parents and guardians. We participate in training and provide resources. I want to thank you all for, um, being so supportive to myself and my staff. Central Office was very supportive of me this year, they were supportive of my staff, and we were successful because of you all. Now, thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, I've got a thought.
Do you? I'm not surprised.
She's learned, she's learned.
She knows you well.
Where did she come from?
Questions, answers teasing.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. You have, I don't know what we would do without you and the nurses. You're such a big help. I know when I was in the building, I don't know what I would have done without nurse help many days, so.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you and all you do, and your staff and all they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, correction to VSBA policy, GCPA Reduction in Professional Staff Workforce, first read, Dr. Stacy.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Ms. Hill, Ms. Bailey. Last month, I, uh, I failed to put the edited version in your packet. We gave you the strike throughs from VSBA, but I did not include the corrected version that we had approved in June of twenty twenty. So it's my mistake, but again, what I'd like to do is present it to you tonight as a first read.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve proposed policy GCPA Reduction in Professional Staff Workforce as a first read.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any questions?
I'm not going to keep voting on this ever now.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay. All right, uh, VSBA May twenty twenty-one policy updates, first read, Dr. Stacy.
Yes, ma'am. Again, uh, in your packets, you have the, uh, VSBA updates, and they do include the strike through language, and so I'd like to present those all to you this evening as a first read.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the VSBA May two thousand twenty-one policy updates as a first read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or suggestions, corrections?
I'm glad we have VSBA for Policy Services.
I agree.
I agree. We're worth it. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Um, approval of school calendar bid, Dr. Stacy.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, in your packet, Board Members, you have the two bids that we were received. I would like to make the recommendation to accept the bid from Clinch Valley Printing in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Okay, is there a second? I mean, a motion? Get a hand, yourself again.
Make a motion to approve the calendar bid from Clinch Valley Printing in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Virginia Department of Education Authorization of Signatures in Absence of Division Superintendent, Dr. Stacy.
I'll volunteer.
I wouldn't let you have my pen, that easy. Yes, ma'am, Members of the Board, I would like that the, uh, School Board approved, uh, Ms. Hill, Deputy Superintendent, as the authorized designate to sign all VDO, VDOE documents in my absence for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Make a motion to approve Deidre Hill, Deputy Superintendent, as the authorized designate to sign all VGOE documents in the absence of the Division Superintendent for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Selection of delegate and alternate delegate for Virginia School Boards Association Meeting, Dr. Stacy.
Yes, ma'am. In accordance with the bylaws of Virginia School Board Association, a school board in good standing will be entitled to one vote in all meetings of the association. Uh, a voting delegate and an alternate will be selected from the membership of each, uh, member school board by that board. A voting delegate and alternate, uh, must be selected to represent Tassau County School Board at the VSBA Delegate Assembly scheduled for November seventeenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. So this afternoon, or this evening, I would like, um, the Board to nominate a delegate and an alternate.
When you skip the meeting that this happened.
Well, he was our delegate last year, and he really didn't get to do his thing.
Poor thing, I'll nominate her. Who wants to be the alternate? It can't be me.
Last year, Mr. Robinson was the delegate, Ms. Moore was the alternate.
Oh, you didn't get to do your job either.
He did vote, he voted.
Yeah, yeah. But it was online.
Yeah, he did it online, it wasn't, it was a little different, yeah.
Okay.
That's not near as fun as trying to get that stupid old thing to work.
He's not here, let's nominate him.
Are we live?
No, we're not live, we're just.
I'll be the alternate again.
We're recording.
Okay.
I'll, I'll nominate that.
All right. There's been a motion for Eric Robinson as the VSBA voting delegate, and Ms. Chris Moore, you're as the alternate. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Passing. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Annual Certification of State-Mandated Local Alternate Assessments, Ms. Hill.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Bailey. The VDOE guidelines for local alternate assessments state that local school boards and division superintendents will continue to certify through the annual Standards of Quality Compliance Assurance that instruction has been provided in local alternate assessments. Measuring the standards of learning and adhering to the Board's guidelines were administered in the following subject areas: Grade Three History, Grade Three Science, Grade Five Writing, United States History to eighteen sixty-five, and United States History eighteen sixty-five to the present. In your packet, you have certification from Ms. Christina Welch, Director of Elementary Education, and Mr. Clay Brown, Director of Middle School Education, confirming that that those assessments were completed.
Okay. Do we need to vote?
We do, that we have received it.
I make a motion to certify that instruction has been provided in local alternative assessments measuring the standards of learning, and adhering to the Board's guidelines were administered in the following subject areas: Grade Three History, Grade Three Science, Grade Five Writing, United States History to eighteen sixty-five, and United States History eighteen sixty-five to the present during the school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Verified. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that has been verified. Uh, now, we need to return back to item fourteen, it is seven fourteen, and this was to be held at seven fifteen. The public comment on the American Rescue Plan ARP Act ESSER III funds for safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services. Do we have any public comment at this time for the ESSER III funds? Second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment on the ESSER III funds. Okay, then we will return to our, the rest of our agenda, which is item seventeen. Superintendent's Report, Budget Update, Ms. Cox.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, and Ms. Bailey. The end of the year is right around the corner, and, um, the financials for this year look good, and we're waiting for the county board to approve their budget, and then we will be able to submit and finalize ours.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Cox? And Dr. Stacy?
Yeah, I just, well, I just wanted to say, and again, I'd, I'd like to brag on Ms. Cox and Ms. Hill a lot. In addition to our regular school finances, uh, this year, you know, we've, we've dealt with a lot of funding with CARES Act and now ESSER, and, and these two ladies have done a remarkable job of keeping up with those, because sometimes the grants were coming pretty fast, one would overlap the other, and then we were also getting additional assistance from the county. So, uh, both of these ladies have, have really been, um, on top of their game, um, with the finances and how they're being spent, what they're for, making sure that we're within all the guidelines of the grants. And again, a lot of the air quality projects that we, we've already approved, the Board has already approved, and some more that will be coming down the pipe. These ladies do all the vetting and the process, and making sure that we're, we're, uh, where we're supposed to be, and, and I appreciate both of them, uh, for all their efforts with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cox, we appreciate all you do. Kate Virtual Academy Update, Dr. Stacy.
Um, yes, ma'am, and, and I'll say this, Ms. Mullins, she and I have been on the Board for the Regional Virtual Academy, and so it, it's been a unique experience. We've seen a lot of growth, uh, from our first meeting to our recent meeting. But basically, Tassau County, uh, we've now had to sign contracts with Virtual, or excuse me, yeah, Virtual Virginia, and Virginia, what used to be called Virginia Virtual, which is now called Stride. And so we've got the, the contracts in alignment with the region, and so very shortly, we will start enrolling our students who have indicated that they would like to do online next year. Uh, it's, it's not a, necessarily an open enrollment, there are some requirements as far as past performance with attendance and grades, so we will take all the folks who've already, uh, signed up for online, uh, go through the vetting process, make sure they meet the criteria, and then we will start the enrollment. Um, we'd actually talked about maybe starting some of them this week, but very shortly, we'll start that enrollment. One of the calls that we're getting is what's the deadline? Right now, we haven't set a deadline, but we probably will, uh, in, in sometime in July, maybe the middle of Ja, July, but we'll advertise that before we ever do that. So, again, if anyone is, is questioning whether they want to look at online or not, feel free to give our office a call at any time. Uh, we'll, we'll share as much information as we can. There is a regional online, uh, website, and I will get, um, Ms. Mullins, Ms. Lindsay Mullins, to, uh, put that out on, on, um, Facebook or Twitter, whatever we've got going on, and then we will include links on all of our, um, homepages as well. But again, we, uh, this is our first go-around with this, so we, uh, ask for a little patience, but we'll, we'll get it straightened out very quickly. But again, we think we can start enrolling some kids, or some students, pretty soon.
Okay, great. Superintendent's Update, Dr. Stacy.
My update is I am so happy to say we made it. It wa, it was a challenge, um, but I think we were successful for the most part. Uh, again, that's, that's because we got good people, uh, my staff, all the administrators, everybody in the buildings, um, true team effort. And I mean, really, it was, uh, it was remarkable. I've kind of beat this to death, but I'll say it again, because it bears saying, we would have a staff meeting, well, excuse me, we would have an update from the state at, say, nine o'clock. We would meet with our staff at eleven o'clock. We would get information out to the schools by one o'clock. By two o'clock, the state would call back and say, forget that, uh, we're going to go a different direction. So, asking for our people to, uh, kind of bear with us, because we were just passing along what was given to us, and knowing that it literally could change by the hour, um, it's, it's, it's a compliment to everybody in the division, because they, they took it in stride. And I'm not going to say I wasn't the first one, and I told them, I said, let me be the horse's you-know-what for, for complaining about it, but they were, they were very good to, uh, take the updates and work with them. Again, Ms. Hill submitted our plan back in, I guess, July of last year, our reopening plan, and again, no plan is perfect, but wow, it, it, it worked out pretty well for us. We were in school probably maybe one or two other divisions longer than us, but we started in, in mid-August and kept trucking through. And again, as Ms. Singleton mentioned earlier, there were quarantines that were positive cases. At times, we had certain schools or certain areas, uh, shut down for a couple of weeks, so went to the remote learning or virtual learning. But all in all, we kept, we kept going along. And so, uh, it was, it was really great to get to the spring, and the weather started getting better, we started getting back with athletics, um, even happy to see some SOL testing come along, because it was just back to some form of normalcy. So I can't stress enough how happy that I am that the year's over with. Uh, we're going to take a couple of weeks and finish up all of our reporting based on this year, but we're starting to look at next year, and, uh, but we're starting to look at next year. And, you know, I, I would like to say that next year we'll be a hundred percent back to normal. I won't say that just yet. I think it's going to be a lot more normal than this year was, but we haven't been given the final go-ahead to remove all the masks and all those things. But we'll, we'll keep the public versed on that. One of the things, I mentioned our reopening plan last year. One of the first things we did, we said, well, we would accommodate some of our learning loss via adding days to the school year. So we went a hundred and ninety days this school year. We'll continue to do so next year. We also said that we would offer summer remediation and enrichment, K through twelve. Our high school summer school is like the old summer school. It's still credit recovery, SOL recovery, and also new classes such as PE. Right now, we've got about a hundred and fifty-five kids, ninth through twelve, in the high school summer school. With the elementary and middle school grades, again, we stress more remediation and enrichment. And so every school in the division, middle and high, or excuse me, elementary and middle, have a program in their school. And so as of today, we've got about three hundred and thirty-seven kids countywide who are taking a part in that enrichment. And so that is, that's good. Some of the kids needed to be with us. We're trying to do some, some gifted type activities, some STEM-type activities, as well as remediating in math and reading. Again, it's, it's another step back to, back to normal. And so, you know, we've got kids in our buildings. We're happy for that. And again, hopefully with the success we've had this summer, we can tweak it, enhance it a little bit, and do it again next summer. But again, I would, I extend my appreciation to the Board for your understanding and being with us. And again, to all my staff and our administrators, teachers, students, everybody in, in the division. It was a, it was a group effort. But again, I, I think, think we did a darn good job of it. I will say that. So again, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next month's meeting, do you want to make that motion?
Let's see, the next meeting, what's the date?
July.
July what? Did you look it up?
He's looking it up.
It will be July twelfth.
Okay. Make a motion that the next meeting, July twelfth, 2021 School Board Meeting, begin at four o'clock. And we also would like to move it back at that time to the Career and Tech Center, where we have had the meetings previously.
It'd be the closed session at four o'clock, and the regular sessions still start at six thirty. Right. Is there a second?
We're not going to vote for it either. No, I'm kidding. I'll second it. That's for the superintendent evaluation.
Yes, we're going to start at four o'clock so we can work on superintendent evaluation. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. But the regular session will still begin at six thirty. That hasn't changed. But we will go back to the Career and Technical Center. We feel like you all are so far away. We're anxious to get back to our regular meeting.
It is so dark. I can't see the agenda. I don't know what's going on after tonight because it's dark.
Okay, it's time for Board Member Comments. Mr. Woodard?
I've been commenting all night. Y'all missed that part. I don't really have any. I'm glad we made it through the year. I wondered a time or two as we sputtered through the beginnings, but we've, we've got a pretty amazing, amazing team out from the top all the way down to, to pull this off. And I'm looking forward to a normal year next year. And are we going next month's at school times?
Yes.
For next year. I will say on, on my other row of VSB A's Legislative Positions Committee, we've got twelve new positions to consider. So next month, the committee will meet, and I'll bring those back to the Board to let you know what we'll be considering in Williamsburg or what Eric will be voting on in Williamsburg for one hour and a half.
Good. Thank you. Ms. Moore?
I'd like to thank Ms. Moplin for her faithful and dedicated service to the children of Tazewell County. Dudley Primary, under her leadership, is a shining star of what an elementary school should be. So I hope she knows how much we appreciate her. I'd also like to express appreciation and thanks to the veteran employees whom are retiring from our school system. You leave a legacy of tireless work ethic and a wealth of experience and knowledge which will be a challenge to replace. I wish them all many happy years of retirement and welcome all the new employees to our wonderful school system. And what a pleasure it was to be able to attend the Richlands High School Senior Parade and Graduation Ceremony. Both were truly joyous celebrations. And thank you to all the county high schools and communities for making the end of our year so special. Also, I'd like to thank Board Supervisors Tom Lester and Travis Hackworth for their generous contributions to make the senior banners a reality for the Richlands High School seniors. And just a thank you to everyone who helped make this past year, as crazy as it was, very successful. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Whittington?
I too would like to congratulate all those that are entering retirement. Enjoy. You've deserved it. You deserve it. You've worked very hard, put in a lot of hours, and it's time to kick back and relax and enjoy it. Also, Mrs. Moplin, who is the Energizer Bunny, she just keeps going and going, and she's amazing. But so thankful for her. Ms. Singleton, also, when reading through your list of things that have been done, it was very impressive. I mean, we, it's all those things that are done behind the scenes that we're not aware of. And it was an impressive list of duties and actual testing services that were provided. And also, I'm glad we made it. I'm so thankful we made it through this year. You know, it's been, it's been a rough one and hoping to get back to normal next year, we hope. But, and then, and welcome to all the new teachers, staff members that are coming on board. We look forward to seeing you and hope you have a great year next year.
It is a good feeling to feel like we have made it through this year. I don't think any of us in our lifetime thought of a pandemic. You know, I can remember all those years of writing emergency crisis plans, and you always put that line in there about a national pandemic. You know, we'll put it in here, but we've never gone through this. This thing will happen, you know. And lo and behold, there we were. So you never know. It's always good to be prepared in some way. And I think, thanks to our good leadership of Dr. Stacy and Ms. Hill and the other directors at Central Office, all of you working together, we made it. And the teachers worked so hard. They had a very tough year. It was tough on kids. It was tough on parents. Everyone had to put in a whole lot of effort. Whole lot of effort, but thankfully, working together. And hopefully, there will be some things that we learned through that that will be a positive impact. Some teaching instructional methods that hopefully we learned a little more about and things we need to do. And so hopefully, we can learn some things from that last year. Thank you, Ms. Taylor and Ms. Welch. You will be missed looking out there, seeing your smiling faces. And we welcome all the new employees and new people that are taking new positions. We look forward to working with you. And all the Board Members are here. We want what's best for our school system, our students. So we are here if you need us. You need to talk to one of us. We're always open to listen. But we welcome you aboard, and it was very nice to meet you all tonight. And glad you're here. And again, thank you to everyone, teachers, parents, Central Office people, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, these people over here behind the scenes that are working the IT. They're always over here smiling and y'all going to stay up. So thanks to everyone. Have a great summer. Have a motion. Make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Who's turn is it?
I second that.
Mr. Woodard doesn't want to adjourn?
I thought a few more things to say.
Oh, okay. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.